Twenty-one and ask for a call to order.
Mayor Boebst. Mayor Brennan.
Here.
Councilperson Conwell.
Here.
Mayor Byrne.
Here.
Director Collier. Director Dever. Mayor DeSico. Mayor Gemella. Mayor Prosec.
Here.
Mayor Sellers.
Here.
Councilperson Simon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much, everybody. I'm here today cheering the meeting as vice chair because McDever is not available. And I appreciate everybody coming today at the end of the year for our meeting. And we have minutes from November eighteenth and ask if we can, somebody can move to approve those minutes. Thank you. Okay, Byrne, Mayor Byrne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so I also want to announce that we have Councilwoman Yvonne Conwell here today as a new member of this board. And want to welcome her as, we know Congresswoman Chantel Brown is not, no longer a part of our team here, but happy that she is in DC. So thanks and welcome, Yvonne, from, represents Cleveland. Correct?
Yes.
All of Cleveland and university circle.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds of Cleveland. So we appreciate that. And at this point, I think I can talk about this resolution, if we can have it read into the record, twenty-one, one, two, oh, nine, A.
Thank you. I'll have you read it in just a minute, Jennifer. I just want to, again, thank you and welcome Councilwoman Conwell to our meeting here today. And Councilwoman Conwell's alternate will be Joe Nani, so he will be appointed alternate. And I also wanted to just quickly thank Mayor Byrne and Mayor Gemella and alternate Khalil Surin for their commitment to this group. And we wish you the best of luck in your new endeavors and congratulations on your retirement. But just want to take a moment to thank you. This is our last meeting with you as our representative, so thank you.
Sit it.
Just read, I guess, Jennifer, into the record.
Resolution number twenty-one, twelve, oh, nine, A. City of Parma targeted parking and transportation analysis.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Mary to discuss this.
She's sorry. Do you not have?
I don't have a copy. We don't have copies of the.
It's not in the.
It's not in the package.
Oh, yes, it's not attached.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. That's okay.
We'll see it up there.
That's my fault. My handy Annette was not here this, to help me with the packet. So we can make sure we, can you go upstairs and grab a couple of those? Thank you, Jennifer. But in the meantime, we will have the presentation on the resolution. We'll get that information to all of you. As we mentioned, I think, in past meetings, that parking is a challenge for most of the communities in Cuyahoga County. And so we envisioned doing a countywide parking study in 2022. But before that's happened, we had the city of Parma come to us with a more immediate need for assistance. And so that's where this resolution is being generated from. Can you access the drive from here or no? Probably not. Okay. Okay, Megan Chaney is leading this effort. And so I'll have her give the information on it and overview, and then we can come back to the resolution and request the vote, if that's okay. Sorry about that. My apologies. I'll hit your microphone.
Thanks. It's nice to be up here and not be talking about subdivision matters or something different for a change. So the city of Parma contacted the county planning commission with a request to conduct review and analysis of parking along three of their main business corridors. That includes State, Pearl, and Ridge Roads. And this is really in response to a desire to make patronage along these three business corridors as easy as possible. So the analysis involves, one, an inventory of all on and off-street parking. So this will be done primarily digitally. We're in the process of beginning that now. It will also include a utilization rate study, and that looks at where the parking is occurring, how many people are parking, both on and off-street, and at what times that parking is the densest. We will be doing a walkthrough on these three corridors, and that will be for three days, two weekdays and one weekend day to try to capture that information. And that will be instrumental in creating the recommendations. We will also be reviewing the city's zoning regulations as they pertain to parking both on and off-street. In that, that review, we'll also be looking at nearby resolutions or, sorry, zoning regulations in terms of on and off-street parking. The project deliverables include a creation of a comprehensive strategy, and it won't just be parking as far as the eye can see. It's going to look at efficient use of land, creative and attractive parking solutions, and transit-oriented solutions. We will be recommending a series of updates as a result of that to their parking regulations. The contract value associated with this is $45,000, with the understanding that county planning will provide about $10,000 in planning or in-kind services. And we're looking for a completion date of July of next year.
Thank you. Any questions, Megan? Because of them. I just want to welcome you, by the way, as beyond the part-time person handling Homestead, right?
Yes, yeah.
So the township, and now you're here full time?
Yeah, full time, yeah. It's great to be back and thank you.
Okay, yeah, welcome. So we're going to, I guess, move on to the next item while we, except Mayor Boebst. What am I, vice chair, whatever, right? It's okay, sunny. How about sunny? Yeah, that works.
Correct. Yes. It's a big team effort. So I'll be leading along with another planner in our office and helping to create those, do the review and create the recommendations. We have a lot of help from our GIS team, including Dan Meany and his staff members, and Kevin, looking at some great baseline data that is out there and available digitally.
I have a question, if I can, if this relates in any way to the TOD zoning study we looked at last time? Or is that somehow related with the analysis and planning?
You know, I'll maybe let Patrick answer that, but I think definitely there'll be elements that we, when, in reviewing and preparing and studying up on TOD recommendations for the region, the two projects will inform the other.
And would you consider permeable pavement and environmental considerations when looking at parking?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that's, you know, it's interesting to see how so many environmental and green solutions also really help the pedestrian experience. So absolutely.
Mayor Boebst.
Yes. So part of the initial data collection has included a lot of information about business type and what the land use associated with each building is to determine, you know, where could those shared parking solutions potentially be? If you have a funeral home right next to a restaurant or a bar, then you know that one will have parking during the day, the other will have parking during the night. So there's, looking at those kind of variations by block to see where those potential solutions might exist. We've also looked at some other parking solutions that concentrate on things as easy as wayfinding and making sure the public is aware of where parking exists. Looking at different solutions, like the city perhaps renting out spaces for a private business that doesn't necessarily need a lot of parking, and then making that a public parking lot.
So are we holding off on a vote on an approval? Take a look at it?
Yeah.
So we're going to wait and then move on to the next topic, which is First Suburbs Single Family Zoning Analysis Update. Megan Chaney.
Okay, I know, I'm sorry. So we're going to listen to an update from Patrick Hewitt on the First Suburbs Single Family Zoning work that we've been doing for the First Suburbs Consortium. Mayor Sellers is all too familiar with this work, but to provide an update on where we are with Phase One and then the upcoming work that we are potentially looking to do in Phase Two. So I will turn it over to Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about this project today. The single-family zoning analysis, Phase One and Phase Two, is a partnership with the Northeast Ohio First Suburbs Consortium and the Cuyahoga County Land Bank that we've been completing over the past six to eight months. When we think about this project, it really is based around our history over the past decade or so. In response to the Great Recession, we saw a number of homes in our inner ring demolished, and it leaves what we call missing teeth in an existing neighborhood, where you might have a single parcel with homes surrounding it that is vacant. What we would like to see, and what many communities would like to see, is infill housing. New housing built on those individual vacant lots in existing neighborhoods, because it brings new people, new investment, and new activity to those neighborhoods. Unfortunately, what many communities told us was that their zoning codes often stand in the way of being able to build the type of development they would like to see. What we mean by that is, we can see in the series of graphics, so if this is an existing neighborhood with three existing lots and two existing homes, we've got that existing lot there in the middle, that vacant lot. Those existing lots have existing widths, depths, and sizes. But when we look at the required width, the required depth, and the required lot size by zoning, often existing lots are smaller. When we also overlay onto that other requirements for front, rear, and side setbacks or maximum heights, what we're left with is a buildable area, this kind of blue square that you see where a home is allowed to be constructed within that space. But when we look at the existing neighborhoods with that buildable area, we can see points of conflict. Homes that are taller than what's required, or what's allowed, excuse me, homes that are closer to the front, rear, or side than what's allowed. Lots that are too small. And these zoning problems create barriers for new development, barriers for developers to be able to put new homes in neighborhoods. So when we think about that vacant lot, that means that it can take longer and be more expensive to develop a home within existing neighborhoods. So the goal for this project in Phase One was to identify issues within zoning regulations that can make constructing that infill housing difficult or cost-effective. What we'll be talking about in future phases is best practices to improve zoning regulations, to make infill easier, updating codes, and tracking infill housing over time. This project had five tasks. The first was a project initiation and infill housing overview, where we looked at trends. How many new homes are being built in the First Suburbs? The second task was to identify zoning districts for single-family in the First Suburbs and gathering the regulations into comparable charts. The third task was to compare those regulations to existing lots and structures to see where those points of conflict exist. The fourth was to identify new, potential lots for new infill construction, and the fifth task where we are now is to close that out. As a start, what we did was we surveyed communities, and one of the first things we asked was, how effective are your zoning regulations in allowing infill development? So this chart, one would be your regulations are very effective, five would be your regulations are the least effective. And communities kind of gathered right there around two or three, somewhat effective, average effectiveness. So people see opportunities for their regulations. The next thing we asked about are, what are the specific parts of your regulations that are problematic? Most people talked about primary structure setbacks, front, rear, and side yard setbacks as being the biggest barrier, followed by minimum lot sizes, setbacks for accessory structures like garages or sheds, maximum lot coverage as approval processes, design requirements and heights, less so. Finally, we asked communities, what priority is infill development to your community? And you see that communities found this to be average, above-average, or very high priority, especially those communities that have infill lots, would like to see infill homes. So with that information, we began our analysis. In the bottom right of that map in gray are all of the single-family zoning districts in the First Suburbs. There are nineteen communities in the First Suburbs and fifty-five zoning districts, which are primarily single-family. In those single-family zoning districts, we categorized thirteen different topics. Minimum lot size, width, coverage, et cetera, all the way down to allowable uses. And we put all of that information into these comparable charts. This example is minimum lot size. So you see the chart there. Column A are all of the communities and single-family zoning districts, again, fifty-five of them. In column B are the required minimum lot sizes for all fifty-five of those zoning districts. They range from as low as 2,400 all the way up to 20,000 square feet. C are adjustments to that minimum lot size. And D is an analysis that we did to see what percentage of your current parcels don't meet your requirements. And we were able to do that for all thirteen of those. For five of those, we were able to map this. So this is minimum lot size in Cuyahoga County's First Suburbs. In yellow are all of the parcels that meet the requirements for minimum lot size. In greens and blues are all the parcels that don't presently meet the requirements for that community's minimum lot size. That means to build on it, you either need to buy multiple parcels and combine them, or get a variance, which can be costly and time-consuming. We were able to do that with five of those categories to see where the issues are in zoning codes compared to what's on the ground today. We were also able to find all of the potential infill lots in Cuyahoga County's First Suburbs. There are more than 5,300 potential infill lots that our mapping team was able to identify. If we think about 2.1 people living in a household, that means more than 11,000 potential residents on those infill lots. We were also able to look at the incentives that communities are providing, so that communities could also compare their community reinvestment area incentives. Many communities, sixteen out of nineteen, provide some sort of incentive to new infill housing development. From that, we have a Phase One report. We have our community survey findings. We have a series of maps that will be available to communities. But importantly, we wanted to talk through our findings. This helps to inform our next phase, where we're talking about updating codified ordinances. There are important things that we found. The first is that not all codes are set up to produce desired infill housing. That means that the regulatory structure of your community is not necessarily set up to get the type of development that you would like. The second is that many existing homes are non-conforming under current regulations. So if you want to rebuild a home, let's imagine it's torn down or burnt down, for whatever reason, it's not there. Oftentimes, community zoning codes won't let you rebuild that same type of home. The third is that community zoning codes have been updated at different times and are at different stages. So there are many communities that are presently updating their zoning code, there are communities that recently did, and there are communities that haven't updated their zoning code in a very long time. And that goes along with number four, community regulations vary greatly. We had a really great hope that there would be many similarities, and we would be able to make simple fixes that would apply across the board. That's not necessarily the case, unfortunately. And that goes along with number five, not all communities regulate everything, and that's also okay. It should be specific to your community. Number six, many communities have maps that are out of date or nonexistent, which means that developers will not be able to find how their property is regulated. We're professional planners, we enjoy reading zoning codes, and we still couldn't make sense or find all of the information of everything. But we did find some simple adjustments that can speed the infill process for communities. In going through nineteen different zoning codes, there were questions that certain communities had that could be answered by regulations that other communities had already put in place, and that's going to help us in the next phase. And finally, some communities have more infill opportunities than others. Again, 5,300 or so infill lots that we identified, many are clustered on the east side, but thirteen of the nineteen communities had more than 100 infill lots available. From this, we are headed into what we hope will be a Phase Two, which will be a future contract with the First Suburbs Consortium. That phase includes five tasks. The first, we want to talk about the importance of infill, so that communities are prepared to communicate that to others, about why infill is important. The second, and the biggest, is code updates. We want to provide a best practices guide. We want to provide model overlays and model codes that communities can adopt to get more infill development, and we have a pilot program where we'll be inviting two communities to participate at a slightly reduced cost. We're going to do a design guidelines guidebook that will provide examples of design guidelines and things that you should be considering when communities are adopting design guidelines. We'll also be outlining potential incentives, both community reinvestment area incentives and others, to attract infill. And we want to track infill over time so we can see how we're doing. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about that. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you to the First Suburbs Consortium and its immediate preceding chair, Mayor Sellers, but also the Cuyahoga County Land Bank. And the cities of South Euclid and Maple Heights participated on a bi-weekly basis with us. But every one of the nineteen First Suburbs communities also answered a survey, and that was incredible information. So thank you to everybody who participated.
Thank you, Patrick, and Mayor Sellers. Yes, you're busy. So any questions about the infill? Mayor?
I'd just like to thank Patrick and Mary and for their due diligence on this project. Obviously, we have nineteen communities in the First Suburbs Ring, and we just found out that there's abundance of these vacant lots from these teardowns we were doing from the money that we're getting from the county to do these teardowns. And now people want to repopulate these neighborhoods, right? They don't want them all to go to green space. They want to repopulate the neighborhoods. Problem we ran into was that we didn't exactly know how to do it, right? Because existing zoning codes were out of date. They didn't conform to being able to do it, right? I mean, so you do a house, you grant a million variances here to make it happen. And people wanted some uniformity to it, and so there's a process that we began to agree on, and we sought out the county planning commission to help us. And we think this is the first step of a couple of phases coming down. Ultimately, we are trying to get to a position, understand that every community is different, and everybody has different needs, but having some sort of template out here that allows you to walk down the road and walk and chew gum at the same time. And so the good thing about it is that we got great participation, Patrick's leadership, stick-tootiveness about what we were doing was great. And so I think that all my members were pleased with where this was headed, right? And so we're looking forward to the next phase, and I think that Mayor Coche is going to be leading that. But I think that is going to be the next thing we go to, and ultimately get to a point where we're going to start to populate these with product.
Great, thank you, Mayor Boebst. A great body of work, a lot of, a lot of good detail. Is, does this reside on the planning commission's website? Would we all have access to it?
No, we are in the process of finalizing the documents and providing it to the First Suburbs. Certain elements are going to, will be living on the website, but not all of them.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I would say that if you would want that, I think that, here, we're not, it's no secret what we're doing here, right? We just, we get a good idea, we pass on it to somebody else, go do, go to it, right? So you could reach out to the First Suburbs Group, and we can get it to you. It's not a problem.
Councilman Conwell.
Yes, so we will be providing a map packet for each of the individual cities. It includes eleven maps. The first five are those non-conforming maps, so what percentage of your parcels don't conform to five requirements. The next five are the actual dimensions of your parcels, so how big your lots are, how wide your lots are. And the last one is the infill lots. Yes, so there's a packet for South Euclid for all eleven of those maps, for instance. So it's not something that we looked at as part of this project, but I have to imagine that, and in speaking with the land bank, we know that demolitions continue right now, and that means that we are providing a point-in-time snapshot of potential infill lots. As new demolitions occur, new infill lots are created, and as new homes are developed, infill lots are removed. Yeah, there certainly are potential properties for demolition. We are working very closely with the land bank throughout this process. They funded part of this. And our specific piece is about fixing the zoning, so that when those demolitions do occur, cities are prepared to be able to get infill easily and quickly.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, thank you for this, and we'll be watching it as.
Thank you, and thank you to the entire team. Kevin is here, but Laura, Dan, Robin, a whole host of folks in our office worked on this, and it was definitely a team effort.
Great, thank you so much. So we're going to, at this point, return to the resolution. We have in front of us the supporting documentation and the contract, this service agreement. Do we have any questions about the resolution that was presented, twenty-one, twelve, oh, nine, A? I can move for an adoption of this resolution if there's no questions?
One second.
Okay, Mayor Brennan, thank you so much. We, any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that resolution passes with the parking study. And I'm going to move this over now to executive director's report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Simon. Again, my apologies for not including that in the packet, and thank you, Jennifer, for sharing that with everyone. Megan did get everything in and timed, so that it was ready for the packet to be sent out last week, and my apologies for omitting that, so thank you. Okay, we will move on to the executive director's report. We'll just hit some of the highlights for 2021, look at 2022, a quick update on the budget, and then briefly talk about the 2022 schedule of meetings for the board meeting. So if we look at the highlights of 2021, as you all know, we've met several times this year. Some of our tentative meetings turned into be official meetings because we had such a breadth of information that needed to be covered. Let me take my glasses off so I can see, because it's fogging up. But just some highlights here, we hired two new team members, we retained all of our existing team members, and we hosted three interns from the University of Cincinnati this year. Happy to say that we welcome Megan Chaney, former employee, and then former contract employee, and now full-time employee with us, so we were thrilled to have her. Laura Mendez Ortiz was also one of our interns from the University of Cincinnati. We brought her on full-time this year as well. And we currently have Sarah Teagan from University of Cincinnati. Her last day is next Friday. So we wanted to just take a minute to thank her for all the work she has done. We'll obviously be sad to see her go. But I think it's important to know just that we were able to retain our entire team, given the turnover in so many different agencies and companies. I'm very proud that we were able to hold our team, make our team hold, and keep moving forward this year. We also created and/or revised four-agency policies. So if you remember at the beginning of the year, earlier this year, I was bringing a lot of things to you. Those policies included a new professional development policy, which did not exist for county planning, when I thought it was very important to have, given the number of certified planners that we have in our team, and that is essential to keep them up to date on their credentialing. We also established a new remote work policy, which did not exist previously. We amended the parental leave policy as well to more, have it be more in line with the Cuyahoga County parental leave policy. So that was a good thing to get done, and especially in the timing of Micah welcoming a new baby girl. So that was good timing on that one. And then we also added Juneteenth as an observed holiday, so that happened all this year. So we will be looking, given all this, Wesley, we will have some work to do on updating our policy and procedure manual to make sure that these are all officially updated in that document. I also wanted to just mention that we have assisted in securing over $1 million in grant funding for the Lakefront project. I really want to thank Jim Sonhalter on our team, Eric Mack from Public Work, and the Smith Group Consulting Firm. This has been a tireless effort. Not only have we received those $1.15 million, but we currently have applications in for over $7.5 million worth of grant funding for this project. So that has not been something that Jim has had on his resume, but he has done a fantastic job of that, and there is more to come. And so these are really critically important grant dollars to move this project forward. We also generated $262,000 in outside revenue. We are very proud of this work that we have done and been able to generate those through contracts that we have with communities in Cuyahoga County. And just as a note, all of these revenues that we generate are deposited back to the general fund. So this is something where we are doing the work, but then we are also supporting the overall budget of the county. We have also completed six plans for communities. We completed Woodmere, Brooklyn, Broadview Heights, Solon, Westlake, and the Community Confluence original plan that included Lake Wood and Rocky River. And also, we had signed, we've signed six contracts for professional planning services this year for the Healthy Urban Tree Canopy, Ohio Public Works Commission, the Natural Resources Assistance Council, for the Lakefront Public Access Plan Amendment, Community Confluence Preliminary Engineering, the Department of Development Interagency Agreement, and the First Suburbs Consortium Phase One Single Family Zoning. So to say that we have been busy is an understatement, and there's more to come. So I just wanted to share some of those highlights with you. There's a couple other pieces from 2021 that I'd like to just note. We've administered, we are administering $950,000 worth of urban tree canopy grants. We officially closed out the program year 2019 cycle. If you remember, those were, we had some delays related to that one because of COVID. That has officially been closed out, and we are in progress with '21. Fall plantings have just occurred, so we will be likely seeing a lot of those reimbursement requests coming in. We also evaluated 42 skip and eight Clean Ohio applications. This skip program is approximately $31 million in grants and loans available. And those preliminary recommendations were posted on December 6. Clean Ohio has approximately $3.6 million. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to Allison and all the others on our team, Jennifer and Annette, and all the accountability that has to happen with these programs. And Susan, for your support on making sure that these are done and done right. So thank you to them. We have also assisted with the Department of Equity and Inclusion. Dan has been instrumental in creating draft equity zone mapping that will be presented to county council, county executive, as well as a methodology to go along with that. And that is something that will be used by all departments in the county as we look at where we're making investments and be able to have a solid set of factors that we're looking back to. I also, this year, we published our communities data book, the regional data book, and most recently, the resource guide, which we'll be pushing out likely next week. So thank you to everyone involved in those. Again, a lot of data, a lot of heavy lifting, but great resources for our community. We continue to advance the mission and the work of the Cuyahoga Greenway Partners. And I just want to give a big thank you to Elaine. She has worked very hard recently. We recently had some terrific virtual meetings with 13 of the 15 district offices and had eight of those officials actually participating themselves to advance this work as we think about capital budgets and where we can help advance trails and connectivity throughout Cuyahoga County. And again, you know, we've talked briefly before, and I've talked about it in the past, of our support to other executive agencies. Dan and his team have been very involved with other departments, with GIS mapping and data assistance. And we continue to feel this is a really important path that we are able to take and to provide that service. And I think it's going to be important in the new year to allow Dan some time just to show you some of the work that has been done. So much of it is behind the scenes, but it's all very important work and really helps other departments in their mission and advancing their work. So look to that in early next year. Okay. And then if we look quickly at the 2022 outlook, as I said, we have a lot still to do. You know, we haven't started it yet, but we are in discussions with Cleveland State about getting an intern in the spring semester, so from January to May. We are also looking at another Cincinnati intern, if possible, for that spring semester. If you can see here, the amount of work that's already on our plate and we haven't yet begun '22, we could use all the help we can get. We also have some discussions with the Cleveland Foundation. There's an opportunity to have a summer internship that would be paid by us for the summer, if we're lucky enough to obtain one of those students. And then also in talks with them about a year-long fall placement for a fellow. So that is a position that is funded through the Cleveland Foundation, and we would have them for a full September to August. And so that would be really terrific to have. They could actually focus on a year-long project and can do that work. So hopefully, we'll be lucky enough to be awarded those positions through that. So, and just as we look at this and this long list of projects that we have coming up, you've heard about most of them because they've required, you know, contract approval. You've heard about transitory development. The Lakefront Plan continues. And we will begin looking at tree canopy for next year. But I also just want to take a moment to talk about the planning grants. This was something that we discussed earlier this year, given my new position starting in January and where we were, the workload we had that had been carried over from COVID, and how do we go out and, you know, solicit new work when our plates were really, really full? So as you see, we're still pretty full on those plates, but I really do, we're taking a step back just to see where exactly and how best can we help the communities. Again, a lot of these things that are listed on this slide are countywide. So it's not just a community by community support, but I will be presenting a go-forward strategy to all of you in early '22 to take a look at how best we can support the communities of Cuyahoga County. Okay, and then finally, the '22, '23 biannual budget update. I just want to thank council for all of their support in this process. As you remember, I presented to the Budget Committee and talked about the need for us to restore our budget in '22 and '23. I'm happy to report that it was brought forth on December 22 as a budget amendment. I do know that council approved the budget Tuesday, December 7. We have not gotten confirmation yet from OBM that our budget has been restored, but we are hopeful that those dollars will be restored in our budget that allowed for the personnel services and, again, being able to support the FTEs we currently have. So we should hear that soon. New board appointments. Spoke with Michelle Pomerantz. She's working with the Executive and Chief of Staff to appoint new board members before the February 10 meeting. So if you remember, that February 10 meeting is going to be our organizational meeting for the new appointments that will be coming in for the next slate of officers. We have Mayor, Mayor Byrne retiring, Mayor Gemella has not been reelected, and we've got a couple other positions that were expiring. So we'll be working closely with them on those. And then included in today's handouts, you'll have a, you'll see a schedule for the 2022 meetings. And we have those listed, again, the ones that are tentative so that we try not to meet monthly. We do have one scheduled for January 13th. Given the holidays, I'm not sure if we're going to have anything that, you know, is something that can't wait until February. So we will likely cancel that one, but we're going to keep it on the calendars just in case we need something. And then what we will do is, I know there's been some issues in the past with on people's calendars, not on calendars. So we will make sure that these are all sent out via Outlook so that you've got the proper room location, the date of those meetings. And we'll get those meeting materials out a week in advance. So we know there'll be other items that will bring to your attention for requiring approval, but if we can avoid, you know, bringing anything in January, we'll give you a break since we've met pretty consistently the past few months. So I think that is it for me. I just want to say thank you to my team. It has been an absolute honor, you know, working with them and leading this group since January, and I cannot believe we're already in December. So I thank you for all of your support and all the work that you're doing in our communities to serve Cuyahoga County. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. You've done a great job, considering coming in with the COVID and everything you walked into. And, you know, I'm really happy you're at the helm. So, and the board, everybody who's been here diligently working with Planning Commission. Thank you so much. Is that, we've had, that incorporated old and new business, correct? So any comments from the public? We have Mayor, our Mayor Byrne last day today. I prematurely gave you your proclamation. Wasn't sure we were going to keep meeting, so. I could have done it again, but I thought there was an element of surprise there, right?
Hi, Beth.
Hi.
This is God speaking. I'm just kidding. Councilwoman Simon will be right back. She had to step out. And Councilwoman Conwell, I don't know if you've met her before, but she is our newest board member. I don't know if you can see her. There she is. She also needs to step out at, shortly, or, so, just let, you know, ahead of time.
I can be, do you want me to begin or I can wait?
Just, what's, is the quorum the same for? Oh, that's six, right? I think we can begin.
Okay. Well, thank you for accommodating my virtual appearance today. I am home quarantining because my husband has contracted COVID even after his three vaccines. So thank you for letting me do this remotely. And I will apologize if you hear any background noises. There is construction going on next door, as it would figure. So thank you for joining me as the Policy Committee today. We just have a few things to go over. District announcements?
Sorry, Elizabeth, can we just have Jennifer call the role real quickly?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Mayor Boebst? Mayor Brennan?
Here.
Councilperson Conwell?
Here.
Director Collier? Director Dever? Mayor DeSico? Mayor Gemella? Mayor Prosek?
Here.
Mayor Sellers?
Here.
And Councilperson Simon, just stepped out, but will be back. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Do you have the minutes? Approval of minutes?
Yes, there are minutes in the packet, hopefully.
Yes.
So you need a motion to approve? Yep, go ahead.
These are the minutes for the November 18 Policy Committee meeting.
We'll need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mayor Brennan, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Byrne. All in favor?
Aye.
Can't abstain?
Yep, abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto Solid Waste District announcements. I'd like to report that our holiday light recycling program has begun and will run through January the 14th. That is where we accept any kind of lights that you may have that you either don't want any longer or have stopped working. And we actually recycle those through a local scrap metal dealer. And there's lots of copper, believe it or not, in the wires. So we will be running that program. The other news or announcement I would like to bring to you is we have had a vacancy for the citizen or public representative on the Policy Committee. Mr. Demuth was our last serving individual in that capacity. And we have had someone step forward. Her name is Michelle Wilhelm. She completed the master recycling program back in 2016, is very active in her community when it comes to just about anything environmental. And she has expressed interest in filling that seat. What we would like to do is have you consider that when we get to the resolution section of the agenda. Her term would be for a single one-year term. And then this time next year, we would look to, if she is still interested, reappoint her as well as our industry representative, Mr. Mathias from Cleveland Cliffs, for a multi-year term at that point. So we'll be talking about that resolution when we get to the end of the report. District updates. Just briefly, at our last meeting, I provided you an update on our assistance with the city of Cleveland and the relaunching of their recycling program. We have continued to do that. Cleveland has progressed in taking a potential awardee to their Board of to their Board of Control and is currently negotiating a contract with that company. That company is Kimple Companies, and they are finishing to walk through that process. I believe they are still looking forward to relaunching this program prior to the end of the year. That is simply up to Cleveland and their negotiation timeframe with Kimple. We are continuing to help them with crafting some educational pieces and will assist them in waste sorts and any other items that they request as we move forward and as they move forward in this process. So, City of South Euclid, we have had two meetings with them. They are very interested in following in the steps of Brooklyn in conducting a cart-tagging program in 2022 and look to see them submit a district grant. And just as a general reminder to you all, our district grants will be available and posted on the web within the next week. That provides for community funding for things such as your shredding programs, calendars, outreach and educational materials. We do have a nonprofit. And then this year, our board did approve an additional $50,000 for special projects. And so, we would encourage communities, if you are interested in doing some special projects, such as a cart-tagging program, to consider submitting an application under the special projects. And that is really all I have to report. We had quite a bit that we brought to you last month. We do have, moving on the agenda, is we do have Resolution 21, oops, I don't know why all of a sudden. Love technology. We have Resolution 211201A, "Before You To Consider," which is the appointment of Ms. Michelle Wilhelm as the Kaiga County Solid Waste District's Policy Committee Public Member Representative. She is one of the two seats that you, as a Policy Committee, vote on as membership. This and then the industrial representative position, which is currently held by Mr. Mathias, are the two positions that the rest of the members of the Policy Committee vote on. Are there any questions I can address?
It's Mayor Prosek. I just had a question. It was obviously pre-COVID, but we had an interesting presentation by the Fraud Unit, if that's the title, that was looking into illegal dumps and talking about catalytic converters and stuff. And the catalytic converter situation continues to worsen. And again, we're all wondering where they're selling these things and who's taking them in. Is that something that the district can help us with? Does that unit still exist?
Absolutely. It's the Environmental Crimes Task Force. And we have cast an agreement, the board at our last meeting did approve our continued agreement working with them. So, I will give you a buzz offline and we can see how we can help you specifically in your community.
But it's not me. I think it's the interest of the county, the enforcement. There's, somebody is taking these things in and it's supposed to be somewhat regulated. That's what I'm referring to. In other words, we're catching the people cutting them off sometimes and they leave DNA and, you know, it's a lot of fun chasing them down. But the point I'm making is that it just seems to be that there's still a market. Somebody's paying these people for these things.
I will have to circle back around with the Environmental Crimes Task Force to get you a better explanation on that. But we will definitely report back at either the January or February meeting as to where things stand on that.
I'm going to reflect that Councilwoman Simon has returned to the meeting. We are at the point of the resolution at this point.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution as so presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Beth. And we'll welcome Michelle Wilhelm and our current, we're just, in our current representative from the commercial end, right? The business, did we talk about him? Okay.
Right. Harry Mathias retains his seat this year also.
Which is great.
And then at the end of 2022, we hope to appoint both for a multi-year term after that.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may, Mayor.
Beth, what actually is the South Euclid cart-tagging project? What is that?
So, this, to back up a bit, the city of Brooklyn underwent this year a cart-tagging program. And what that is, is it's an enforcement activity. Cart-tagging, and I'm referring to tagging of recycling carts. This is an activity that is more frequently incorporated in solid waste programming on either the coasts and is beginning to make its way into the Midwest. And what that involves is whether it's a full-time individual, or in this case, what Brooklyn did is they obtained a grant from the district. And we did an audit of their recyclables prior to this outreach and educational activity. They hired part-time summer help, basically. And what these individuals did is they got out, prior to the recycling truck getting to the recycling cart during an eight-week program, peeked into the recycling cart. And if there was something that was inappropriate in the recycling cart, maybe it was a quilt, maybe someone had bagged their recyclables instead of having them loose, they noted so on what looks like a door hanger and then placed that hanger on the handle of the recycling cart. So, when the individual returned home, they would see this hanging from their cart. They could look at the tag, understand what had, you know, they had, and it may be inadvertently put in the cart. And it's an out, it's a direct, one-on-one outreach and education program to help folks understand what specifically can it cannot go in the recycling cart. Meanwhile, during this eight-week period of time, the city of Brooklyn had also sent out educational information. At the conclusion of this eight-week period, we helped them conduct a post-audit of their recyclable materials. And what was demonstrated through this direct, one-on-one outreach of education is there was a 50% decrease in the contamination of recyclables found in the recycling carts. And we put together a report, shared it this past fall through one of our Trash Talk virtual meetings with all of the service directors. And now, South Euclid is interested in replicating this program. Whether it's, it probably won't be in the exact same fashion as Brooklyn, but they are, we've had two meetings with them to investigate how, based on the complexion of their community, you know, we can best do that activity for them. And we would do that for any community that's interested. One of the reasons we asked our board to please consider additional funding for special projects is this is one of the best outreach and educational tools that a community can conduct to decrease the amount of contamination found in their recycling carts. And so, South Euclid is interested. We'd encourage anyone else that is very interested, please shoot us an email or call us and we'd love to meet with them.
Thank you. You'd have to, it's nice. But I mean, it'd have to work a different way in my place. You had to do the education first and then say that I want to do some enforcement. Like, you can start off with that, but it's beautiful. Because I think people by nature want to do the right thing. They just don't know. You know, some people are, they think that some of the stuff that goes, this, I'm doing the right thing, it's going in the container. Like, no, you got to wash this out first and then, right, so. Right, 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 right. So, I think it's a beautiful thing. It's a beautiful thing.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Beth. I just want to emphasize, one of the concerns is that nobody wanted this to be punitive. So, it's like these happy stickers. They're oops, they say oops on them. So, it's like encouragement. But you're right. I mean, but also, the market of recycling shifts so quickly that, you know, consumers got used to looking at recyclables as numbered, remember, one through whatever. And that's what they were used to and putting it in blue bags. And now, that's totally gone. So, it's really constant education and people do want to do the right thing. But this is a way to do it. And I hope communities want to be a part of this. I think it's going to be really positive. So, thanks, Beth, for.
You're welcome.
Good to see you virtually. Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, do we have to update the recycling?
Well, the solid waste does. So, okay, solid waste is where that's found. Okay. So, I think, I'm coming in at the end of the presentation. So, we voted on the one matter. And the minutes were approved. And anything else, Policy Committee? Hey, Beth, thank you. And I think.
You're welcome.
Wait, Mayor Boebes just saying goodbye or do you have a question?
Just saying goodbye.
Are you going to have carts coming in?
Yeah.
The mayor, are you going to have carts coming into your city anytime?
Beth, it's Pam Boebes from Rocky River. And yes, this issue of contaminated recycling, it pains us every day of every week. Of course, we have blue bag recycling, so that's the biggest contaminant. When we send a load out to Republic, so those recyclables are costing us $100 a ton.
Yep.
If we throw it in landfill, it's less than, well, it's around $40 a ton. So, $100 to recycle if it's contaminated, another $75 a ton, $175 a ton. And that is unacceptable. So, yes, we're working on, Beth and her team have been helpful to us. And right after the first of the year, we're looking at this again, so.
That's awesome. Thank you. Yeah, there's a way to do this, to make money. And we're talking about the shifting market with cardboard and different materials that are actually, you know, making money. So.
If I may, since Mayor Boebes brought it up, I'm experiencing also a push-pull in our own community. University Heights still has blue bag recycling. And I have, our service department has put in for the budget for next year, carts for recycling only, to try to, you know, push our city council towards curbside pickup of recyclables. Our city council has been aggressively against change when it comes to this issue, passed a resolution last month saying that backyard pickup shall be the method of pickup in the city of University Heights. And it was unanimously passed, however. I know that the residents are not, are much more split than our council is unified with respect to the issue of improving recycling, recycling. Similarly, we have the same kind of pricing that Mayor Boebes just mentioned with regard to blue bag and so on. Three of our seven council members back in 2020 actually voted to end recycling pickup altogether, on the grounds that it would save $16,000, by some math that they'd come up with. Fortunately, it was only three out of seven, but all the same, you know, I am doing what we can to move our community forward and improve sustainability and improve recycling. The markets do shift. And, you know, we were heartened by what we saw in Chagrin Falls. And there are reasons to keep doing and trying to implement better and ultimately best practices in this area. And I imagine I'll be in touch with you as well with regard to some of these same things. And as long as I'm talking and have the mic, I hope that your husband's condition here resolves quickly. And I'm sure everybody here feels the same.
Stay safe, Beth.
Please.
Mayor, so, can I ask you a question, Mayor?
Yes.
So, when you, you know, because backyard, we used to, once we used to have backyard trash picked up. But it comes at a cost, right?
It sure does.
Right. It comes at a cost. And it's funny, because when I laid it out in front of the people, I said, all right, I'll do what you want me to do. I said, you want this? This is what it costs. They saw that price tag. They're like, get rid of that. Let that go. They had been here for like, they had been here like 25 years. They were like, let that go. Right.
I had the opposite. We presented it back in 2012, so 10 years ago. And they, I said, we can save $5 million, keep everybody working.
Right.
The union working, everybody working. We'll save $5 million. They said, no, we like our backyard pickup. And some of you mayors teased me about our concierge refuse collection. So, I haven't forgotten that we get. But, but I do think today, there is a hybrid technology, has been a game changer. Of course, robotics, as well as what we see at the MRFs. I mean, it just has changed this. And it's a, it's a different day and it's time. And thanks to Beth and her expertise and her team. We'll get that done.
I just wondered, because there was a cost savings and we didn't, nobody lost a job. And so.
Right.
We just transitioned, right? And nobody had looked back, right?
We're in a similar position. I mean, I find myself proposing that we actually add people to our service department at this point because we are not doing the thing. There are so many things we aren't doing that we could be doing if we could right-size our efforts and modernize with regard. And I got residents who say, you know, we pay so much in taxes. It's, this is the one thing we get. And like, you're right, it is the one thing you get because all the tax money goes to it. There are so many things we could be doing, year-round community programming.
Right.
Right.
I got you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Well, it upsets me to see blue bag recycling. Yes, Cleveland Heights, when I would drive through Cleveland Heights and see that on the curb, it's counterintuitive. That's not recyclable. That ends up 320 million of those things in our landfills or lake every year. And we're putting recycling in there just for that to sit in a landfill. It's so 1980s.
It is so, it is so backwards. I have told.
It's so backwards that I will invite our Sustainability Department to do a presentation in your city, if you want, for residents to understand why this isn't good for.
Especially like our city council.
Anybody, for a city council to have a presentation. So, good.
I mean, I must, I must agree, Councilwoman Simon, when, you know, we got 4,200 single-family households in University Heights. I like to remind people, if everybody throws, if everybody puts out one blue bag recycl, that's over 4,000 blue bags that get torn open at the MRF, emptied and then thrown away.
In our landfill or in the, in the lake?
Right, right.
And we don't have space for that in the landfill.
I would be happy to come out and help build your case with any community and present. That's the one thing about Kaiga County, since a lot of these programs are paid for out of the general fund, it's difficult to present a full-cost accounting. And I think you're absolutely correct when residents, hopefully, when residents see what that really costs, that can be a great influence. So, please let us know if we can come assist.
Mayor, we still do backyard trash pickup for the sickening firms. Yes, we do. We still do that, right?
I think you can have a hybrid.
You can have a hybrid, as you can. There's always going to be that group that's going to need it, right? And so, we didn't cut them off, right? And there's a process to get on it and they get it done.
Right. And we've pointed out that so many other communities have made this jump, have solved these problems, that they're not mysterious.
Oh, yeah. My daughter can wipe the can down. It's not a problem.
Roll it, roll it down, right? To Beth's earlier point, you were, you were asking about this tagging. We had asked Republic, so of our contaminated recyclables, what are you seeing in bins? So, when you do automated refuse collection, much higher contamination. But they have a contract. And so, what Beth is talking about is so helpful to the haulers because they're getting it worse than even communities who are sort of touching it and feeling it. We can look in a bag and throw it either in the refuse or we can throw it in recyclables. Not that we want to do that, but we can remove contaminants with a little bit of effort. In robotics, that's more difficult. So, the tagging becomes critically important, especially as the markets change, as Councilwoman Simon mentioned. So, I'll stop there. We could talk a lot of trash.
Right. Okay, thanks, everybody, for being engaged on this. It's something I care about a lot. So, as you know, thank you. Okay, so, Beth, good luck over there. And I guess we're going to adjourn the motion.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Okay, second, Boebes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Solid Waste Policy Committee adjourned. We'll see you next year and have a good holiday.
Happy holidays, all.